Call the meeting to order. Oh, Mr. Castile, what about Pete?
He's not here.
Oh, okay. All right, well, if we need to talk with him, we'll hold on. All right, well, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
We are live and, um, let's see, we have some items in front of us, but first, let's, uh, get to the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, do we not?
Yes, we do.
All right. Those were sent out. We've had a chance to review them. Do we have a motion on those?
I'll make a motion, approve.
Second.
Both of them?
Sure.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to approve by Mike. Both sets of minutes and a second by Marie on both minutes. No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Andres, is that him?
No, he's not coming.
Oh, he can't make it? Okay, all right. Um, okay. Does anyone have an extra agenda?
I'll get one from the front.
No, don't bother, because I think I have that memo and that's the same order, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I have that. I'm just looking, this doesn't always cover all the, uh, bullet items we have.
Thanks, man.
Now, everybody's giving, boy, I should, does anyone have a million dollars? It's not happening. All right, thanks.
I need that back.
Okay. Well, all right. Let me have that back.
I have it on the computer.
This is different. We have, we have, we have this, just so everyone in the audience doesn't think I'm a complete idiot, that, that lists item by item in this, that lists the actual applications that are on for tonight. So, this is the agenda and this is the notice of public hearing. Okay, so application review. Let's start with, uh, number one. Well, anybody here on the table, application? Yeah, let's, let's do that. Let's take that out of order here. Um, I'm actually gonna make a motion to table this and the reason is frankly, because it has been so long since we heard this, there were a lot of things that I believe happened at Planning Board and I want to take the opportunity to review our hearing and perhaps look at some Planning Board stuff.
I'll second you.
So...
I would definitely appreciate that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Do we know when the original, when this was?
May or, uh, April?
It was early, it was after I started, I think it was either May or, or June.
Okay, well, easy enough, we could, we'll be able to find it out, yeah.
What, how do you want to handle this? I, how do you, do you just want to look at it individually and go back and look at the tape or do you want to meet and discuss the application?
No, I, personally, I just, I can do it on myself. All the Planning Board meetings are all available online and all that stuff, right? So, if, I'm not saying you guys have to do that, but I, I think I'll probably take a look at some of them anyway.
Did the board members get a copy of the resolution for reference sake? The Planning Board's resolution?
I think they're just considering materials.
Just, just now.
All right, okay, good, all right.
I want to make sure that I got...
They want to have that reviewed.
And then there's that other one that says number three.
Yeah, there's two, right?
Yes, there is one that says the number three, I didn't even notice that. Well, this is the Bronco, one of these, I think.
Those are blenders and ones we're going to be using tonight.
I don't have it. It's all, if you could, if you'd email me a, oh, it's what we got tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Well, in any event, that's, so that's my motion to approve just a, uh...
I'll second that one.
Any further?
The blenders, yes.
Yes. Approved tabling, I should say. So, to table it once again for that opportunity. We have, so I'm making the motion.
I'll second.
Mike seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
For the benefit of my kind, would you expect to take it up again at the next meeting?
Well, it's certainly gonna be on the agenda, but yes. The short answer is yes, Bob.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, before we go through, uh, the agenda review, what do we have here on the pile that's given to us today? Anything?
What I'd like to talk about is the, uh, materials that were sent to you regarding a request for a new hearing on the Kipkoki application.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I know there are people here tonight who are interested in that.
Okay.
Um, just for the board's reference, uh, the applicants did submit, they, they met with staff, uh, members of staff, um, they went through the, uh, application, they, they've actually asked for, uh, some reductions and some, and eliminations of some variance requests. And something else popped up that we just found out today is, when the Planning Board approved the site plan for the project, they usually approve the conditional use permit that goes with it, but they did not do that in this case. So, this board would have to be responsible for granting the conditional use permit as well, so that makes it a little bit different of an application than it was before it came to you, because you were not...
So, we have to have that at a new hearing?
That would have, well, yes, there's, there's gotta be a new hearing anyways, because there's some changes they made trying to demonstrate that they're making a different application than the one that you heard and denied. And just quickly, uh, the conditional use permit is one thing that you'd have to review that you didn't before.
Let me interrupt you on that. You said that the Planning Board didn't do that.
They did not. They, they normally...
But they have, they have the authority and jurisdiction to do that?
Yes. When, when there's a, if there's an application before the Planning Board for a new business, not only can they give the site plan approval process, uh...
But they can do a conditional use permit?
They can also do conditional use permit.
And they just, they don't have to, or...
No, I think, I think it was in burden, because I think the staff thought that it was going to come here. It was when Harold was working and then he kind of left and it got lost.
I think you need a conditional use permit if you didn't grant allowing the business.
Right. And then, then the other question I have is, given that authority, and I know Pete's not here, and that, and then we can resolve this afterwards, but if they have that authority in that jurisdiction, can, are we able? Do we have the jurisdiction that, uh...
You do. Yes, you do.
Okay.
Uh, and you're, you're the last processor to be able to do that, because then you have to send it back to the Planning Board and there's no need to do that if you can do it as well with the...
No, and, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do that, I just want to make sure that we're within our legal authority in order to do that. Okay.
So, just for your reference sake, uh, they, they would have to ask for the condition, they don't even know that yet, unfortunately. We haven't had a chance to talk to them about that, but it would just be part of the application process. Um, they have, uh, what they've tried to do is they eliminated the parking variance request.
Yeah.
They've now added the parking. They have reduced the size of the building by 400 square feet.
Yes.
Um, they have reduced, I'm sorry, they have increased the setback, the front setback on Penwa Park by, and then a couple more feet. And they, um, they still have to request the buffer, because obviously the buffer can't change no matter what, because the property on one side of the street is commercial, the other one's residential.
Right.
So, they'd still have to ask for that, but, but it's a little bit different than what it was the last time.
Okay.
And I guess the question is, is the board comfortable enough with those modifications to allow the applicant to come back and, and apply for a new application?
And before we answer that, I know you haven't even taken off your coat. And let me tell you, I understand when somebody's late for a meeting, because they're coming from another, another job. Not from a guy that was about 10 minutes, 15 minutes late for this meeting, Pete, so I'm trying to give you a little cover here. This vote on reconsidering short of one year, because it's a new application, I believe in the past you've rendered the opinion that we only need a majority of a quorum? Is that right?
So, it depends. Our code...
Under our code?
Under our code, so, if, if it's a, um, rehearing under the town law, you're required, it's required to be a unanimous vote of everybody present. But that's a rehearing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our code, um, has a little bit different language than that and it talks in terms of, um, bringing a new application, I think is the way it's referred and you can't, so typically you can't do that. You have to wait a year unless the board is satisfied that there's been a change in circumstances. New, new evidence that didn't exist at the time.
New requests, modified requests of...
Yes. If it's a different application.
Well, in my memory, which isn't as great as it once was, when we talked about this sort of thing, we used to always use the phrase substantially different or, or, you know, not substantially similar, however we put it. Is, is the proposed, the new application different enough from the one that had already been heard that we could, we could forego the year waiting period? And if that's, is that a fair framing of the, under our code?
Yeah, and I'm just looking up, I'm looking up our specific provision right now. It's in, um, spare it with me, it's at 250, I think, or 15. So, it's 250 dash 15.5. Application shall not be eligible for resubmission for a period of one year unless, in the opinion of the board having jurisdiction, new evidence is submitted or conditions have significantly changed to an extent that further consideration is warranted.
Okay. Pretty, pretty broad standard, which is okay. Uh, and so getting back to, on that code section, um, what number of affirmative votes are necessary for that to approve?
That would be just a, a majority of the board is fully constituted.
As fully constituted?
Yeah, so basically what you would typically need to make a decision.
Okay. So, with or without, obviously the answer to that is three.
Three, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, well, all right. Go ahead, I interrupted you.
No, you didn't. Actually, I, my, my question is to the board, do you feel that it's significant enough to warrant a new public hearing?
Uh, well, something, I'll go first and I, I'll in fact make a motion to approve it as a, uh, new application and authorize a resubmission. Based upon what I've seen in the submissions themselves and also upon, uh, of Jim's characterizing.
And also too, you, they reduce the size of the building, okay, which is a different footprint.
Right.
I mean, they've actually eliminated a variance.
Right.
And, uh, we have to approve now. The other thing that the Planning Board didn't approve, right, you know, the license that...
Well, that would, that would be part of a new application, but I don't even, if we deny this, they wouldn't submit that now.
Right.
It's just kind of particularly upsetting that we offered them the opportunity to do just what they're doing at the time and they said, no, it was all or nothing, because if they couldn't have it the size that they wanted, then it wasn't economically feasible to develop and they were out. So, now they're coming back and as I said, we could've basically dealt with this a couple months ago when they brought it up.
I don't think that's a question, but I...
No, it's not.
No, I know, I, I hear them.
They're gonna have to go back to the Planning Board too, if you approve a different application, you know?
Yeah, and I think the way that would happen is because it's, uh, everything's smaller now than it was before, it's not that they're gonna have to have a public hearing per se, but they will have to go back to the Planning Board for the adjustments to the resolution of approval to, whatever it is you look at. And if you approve it, they'll have to go back and refer that back to the...
Does the Planning Board also have to make a similar determination? If we...
No, but they'll go to a work session and do it through a work session and somebody will have to make a motion to modify the plan.
No, they, it was an approval. The, the provision here in our code that we're talking about is a resubmission after a denial.
They actually got an approval from the Planning Board, so...
Got you. Okay, so I've made a motion to, uh, accept it or approve the application to be reheared. Did we get a second on that?
I'll second.
Joe seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so next month?
Yep, I think we'll, we'll get back to them and let them know.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm late. Glad I could jump right in, though?
Not a problem.
Yeah, you did.
You did a great job.
Okay. Anything else in this pile, Jim, that we want to talk about ahead of going through them one by one, or are we good?
I don't think so. I think we're... Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, last meeting, November, Pete had noted that the application for the shoe department sign, we had made the determination that we did not do the, uh...
Seeker.
The seeker. So, it's an unlisted action, so we would need to have somebody make a motion for the seeker.
Go ahead, Mr. Jerr.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
An unlisted action and a finding of no significance?
Wear metal impacts, there's a...
No further.
Motion, I'm sorry. I did and, uh, Mike seconded.
Very good. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
How about we go through number one?
Got a lot of questions, but I'm not sure, are they entitled to move their variance for a fence that was constructed by somebody else and they're obligated to maintain without something from them saying from Delta Sonic? It just seems to me where, as I said earlier, um, complicated, they're already complicated situation, because there's no written agreement. There was a reference to filing an agreement in the county clicks on.
Oh, I see.
Which was never done.
Yeah. We don't believe anything's been filed, right?
We don't. So, just to give you a little background, because I know most of you weren't here, you were, went back and saw that. In 1998, you were here, 1998, Delta Sonic has a previously non-conforming use, came to the board asking for an expansion. As you know, the expansions only occur if there's a benefit to the community. Our, uh, in this case, um, they were having issues with noise, they were having issues with lighting at night. Uh, the zoning board of appeals, I thought did a really good job of trying to mitigate some of those impacts and what they did was they required an installation of a sound barrier fence immediately adjacent to the driving lane. In addition to that, uh, the board did require the construction of an eight-foot fence, a wooden fence, and required Delta Sonic to maintain that as a condition of approval, uh, which they have done, uh, and they agree that it's their responsibility to do it. As you read the letter, uh, from Delta Sonic, they're still willing to take care of their eight-foot fence, but, but they have no intention of, you know, taking care of a 10-foot fence, um, based on the agreement that they had with the board.
By the way, the fence is owned not by Delta Sonic.
It's owned by the owners of the properties and...
Properties.
Because it does not sit on a Delta Sonic property. It sits on, sits on the applicant's properties and the adjacent neighbors.
Don't we have conflicting letters, though? One seems to say that, the other seems to indicate that the mere fact that this guy has modified the fence...
Right.
Would, would make their agreement to maintain null and void.
Totally void.
Right.
Well, he, he's...
It's a condition of approval, though, by the board.
That's right. And he's, he's modified the fence to give you an idea of what the fence would look like. I mean, his intent is obviously if he gets it, he would, he would modify it.
You fill it in entirely.
If he doesn't, then he'll put it back to what it was, but I think the intent was to show you what it could look like, uh, in his eyes, you know, not being a, a, an eyesore of a neighborhood or whatever. But, the key is now is, you know, Delta Sonic is saying that they are not maintaining, um, a 10-foot fence. Uh, they still may be required to maintain eight feet of that 10 feet.
Well, that, and that I think is a question Mike just kind of asked.
Yeah, and I don't think, and you made a good point.
And then where are we if we agree to the 10, allow the 10-foot to exist and...
Well, you may need more information. I mean, the intent is to get the information out tonight if you don't have it all. You can table it till you get what you need.
Well, I, given the fact that Delta Sonic, is anyone from Delta Sonic here? And we haven't started the hearing yet, but let's assume that they're not here. Um, I, I would, I'm not sure what the, I would rather leave the hearing open, just so we don't have a back and forth here as opposed to, you know, on, uh, at the, at the public hearing and let everyone chime in. Okay.
So, not close the, uh...
Not close the hearing, just leave it open.
Thanks.
So, other than, than that, I think we have that issue framed, so to speak, that, uh, anything, anything else on this? No. Okay.
Can I add something?
Not yet.
Not, not yet.
Uh, two. Any, any questions or new information on two?
You just got a question. Those are two acre lots out there, right?
Uh, one acre, I believe, one acre.
Are they? I thought they were two as well.
They're one acre.
Okay.
But again, the question's gonna be, what's the hardship to try to cover the code?
Yep. All right. Three. Now, if I understand this, this is Sundays, eight to noon.
Yeah.
That's it.
Eight to one.
Eight to one? Okay, and then...
Eight to twelve.
And then, and then gather them up, store them, bring them back out the next Sunday, but, but every Sunday of the year? Not just three Sundays, not just...
This is your song?
Okay. Um, all right. Any other questions on that? Six. The barber shop in the...
Martin.
Wow, I'm moving ahead, yes. Boy, that wasn't even close. I took, I didn't have my glasses.
I know.
So, the, I was just, want to check a discrepancy. Um, for number four, all we're talking about is a conditional use permit and the extra sign.
That's right.
Not this possibility of a third tenant, which was mentioned on the...
No, not this time.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Good question.
All right.
Eight to one was...
I thought it was eight to one on there.
Was it, well, the Monroe County Department of Transportation said it was their understanding that it was eight to one.
Yeah.
Okay. Clarify that.
The application says eight to twelve.
All right, number five?
Well, I gotta, I have a count about that.
Five?
Yeah.
Sure.
So, there's a note about it being, uh, before the Planning Board and they acted under seeker, but I believe they did that as an uncoordinated review, which means that this board would still have to make its own determination as well. So, I just, I don't want there to be any confusion and...
And then, um, six. Any questions for clarification on six?
The only comment is they, they're currently before the Planning Board, not so much for site plan approval, but for the...
Architectural.
Review of the architectural improvement. Um, and the application that was submitted to you is different. Uh, I think what they do is the Planning Board indicated that they wanted to see enhancements to what they were proposing and I think that they have, they probably will, might show you what they are proposing with the Planning Board. Uh, I don't know if how different it is, I haven't really seen it in a, in a color rendering or anything, so just want to make sure that you're looking at the latest and greatest with the Planning Board versus...
All right, so, let me, let me, go ahead, go ahead.
Subject to change later?
Well, they have to go back to the Planning Board again. Um, you know, we, we thought that this would've been resolved probably the first meeting, but because there's, the Planning Board's asking for more than what they saw, you may, you may do a couple things. Number one, you may table this pending review by the Planning Board as to what the final design of the buildings...
Well, especially if there's architectural issues involved.
Right, and there are. And then secondly, um, you may want to send, uh, some information to the Planning Board about how you feel about the signs or you like them or don't like them, whatever the case may be, but it'd probably be good for the Planning Board to have a feel for where you are as it relates to the number of signs.
I, I understand that, but I guess if, let's say we, uh, kind of like them. Or let's say, you know, maybe, but then Planning Board, the architect, architecture changes so much so that maybe the signs don't look as good with the changes that they are proposing in front of the...
Well, that's why you're gonna probably table the application.
I mean, there may be some buildings where three signs are, look good.
Why, why don't we send the Planning Board exactly what the town board requests or doesn't like in signs? I mean, maybe they should go towards those guidelines rather than just say...
Well, it's not so much what the town board likes or not, it's what the code requires.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's who made the code, not us.
No, understood, but...
I'm glad you mentioned that there are gonna be changes, because I, I watched the Planning Board meeting and it was definitely, um, there were some real issues.
Yeah. So, so we'll let them make their presentation and then we'll go through that.
All right. Anything else on the agenda to handle now? All right, let's, go ahead, Andy.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Going back to, number three, 260 Embry.
Yep.
Yes. We did get, I don't know if you guys signed this, uh, from the county?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be in our package.
Planning and...
Yeah.
They had something about 10 feet or something?
Yes.
As long as they stay within that, there.
Right.
But they did say okay, but that's the key.
Yeah, we got this, uh, the referral form back and it, they considered it to be a local issue.
Local issue, thank you.
All right, taking brief recess and then start the hearings, I just, uh, two minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be our public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to that podium there, uh, give us name and address and then explain to the board why the relief requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will very likely have some questions and then we'll ask anyone in the audience that cares to speak about the application to come up and do the same thing. Give us name and address, uh, and then speak his or her mind. Uh, after the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and we will reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on the applications and take care of any, uh, other unfinished business the board may have. Members of the public are welcome at both the public hearings and the deliberations, although generally speaking deliberations are time reserved for conversations amongst board members, board members with staff and/or counsel. As I said, you're welcome to stay for both sessions. We have a fairly lengthy agenda tonight. Um, uh, if you want to leave, you are, you can and you can simply call tomorrow if you like and find out what action of any of the board took on a particular item. Uh, each month we like to say that we think the town does a very good job of notifying neighbors and citizens of the town that certain applications are gonna be heard and the town does this so that neighbors are and citizens are fully informed of their right to come in and speak about the application. The town requires applicants to post signs. Uh, we post the agendas on the website, send postcards to neighbors if you live within a certain distance of the application. And again, it's all done to get people out here, um, or to send in emails or make phone calls in whatever way they think is appropriate to express their views. calls, in whatever way they think is appropriate to express their views. We think it works pretty well, and it helps us do our job. And that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. And Andy, may we have the first application, please?
Richard Shefcek, 57, Winterset Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625, requests an area variance from chapter 250-7.1-D of the code to allow a higher fence than permitted at 57 Winterset Drive. The property is owned by Richard and Beverly Shefcek and zoned R-1-15. This is SBL number 139.05-1-58, application number 18Z-0004.
My name is Dick Shefcek. I live at 57 Winterset Drive, and I'm making an application to raise a fence, partially raise the fence, not the total length of the fence, on the rear of my property that faces the Delta Sonic building. I think I'll just read your point one on the application of, the zoning board application, because that pretty well defines what I'd like to do. Point one says, "Make application for an area variance to the zoning ordinance for the following reasons." My reasons, raising of the existing eight-foot fence, which is 121 and 1/2 foot long, by two foot to a 10-foot height for 43.3 feet, will effectively block the Delta Sonic building and associate lighting of the building at night, which has become increasingly visible due to the loss and thinning of trees over the years. The fence was originally installed in 58, 98, excuse me, 20 years ago, and it's deja vu. 20 years ago, I was before the board because I applied for a variance to go to a 12-foot fence there. And at that time, Delta Sonic said that they would put up a 12-foot fence, but that variance was not granted, so they didn't put up the fence. What's interesting is obviously I was extremely upset when they didn't put up, when you didn't accept the variance. And in retrospect, a 12-foot fence would have been a little much. When I look at it today, and really, the eight-foot fence, I could see why you didn't approve the 12-foot fence back then. I was very upset then, but now I'm not because I think it would have not been very, very I'd like to go into a little background as to why I'm pursuing this partial 10-foot fence. The main reason, as I had mentioned there, is when I look out my back windows, and you folks have pictures of what I'm going to describe, I can visibly see, even in the summertime now, the back end of Delta Sonic, and I'm greeted by the oil change signs and so on, oil change entrance, and so on and so forth. I'm only raising a portion of the fence that allows me to see this, and it's less than, it's about 40% of the total length of the fence that I'm raising, and it effectively blocks the signage and so on from Delta Sonic. And basically, this whole situation started with a telephone call to Mike Green of Delta Sonic. Now, Mike Green was one of the original members of Delta Sonic that went for the original variance back in, it started in 1996. And, Mike, I think you were on the board at that time?
I was. Remember it well.
And, so, it's good to see you here.
Thanks.
I guess he doesn't remember I was on the board, too.
You were?
I had a lot of hair back then. Mustache, beard, everything.
So did he, maybe.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, in any event, Mike obviously remembers everything that we went through back then, and I gave him a telephone call in June of 2017, and basically asking that if Delta Sonic could remove a tree that was down in a windstorm in 2012. I had a massive tree that was blown over, and it almost took out the power line that runs between the two properties. And the tree was ultimately cut down by RG&E, because if it would have come all the way down, it would have taken the line out. But they did leave all of the debris underneath the tree. So, there was probably 80% of the debris on my property and 20% on the Delta Sonic property. The fence was, at that time, was also in need of maintenance on both the 57 and 49 Winterset Drive properties. So, that's what really kicked it off, is my desire to get rid of the stumpage because it performed, it was a great home for groundhogs, potentially skunks, and so on and so forth. So, I contacted Jim Costello at that time to, because I knew it involved Delta Sonic and the variance that was granted to Delta Sonic at that time to construct the new addition, which by the way, I think is an improvement over what was there before, the Mexican Restaurant and Pizza Hut. So, I questioned Jim relative to requesting that they remove the tree and so on, and Jim had mentioned that as far as the variance is concerned, the variance states quite clearly that they have to maintain the fence, not the properties in between. But, again, Mike Green, at that time, was very reasonable. He said, "Okay, I'm going to come and meet with you, and we'll take a look at the situation and see what we can do." Well, Mike never did make it personally, but he did have Delta Sonic personnel meet with me in early June to discuss my request for the tree removal and the fence maintenance. You know, at that first meeting with DS personnel, I won't get into names because it's just too detailed. I asked if Delta Sonic would consider removing the tree stump that was still there as a result of cutting the tree down. Cut some of the dead trees between the two fenced properties and provide a 10-foot fence as they were ready to supply a 12-foot fence in 1997 if I had the variance. We had multiple meetings, conversations, telephone conversation, emails, that resulted in the removal of the trees, the tree remains between the two fences, on the 57 Winterset property, and maintenance of the fence on the 57 and 49 Winterset properties. Per a telephone conversation with Mike Green, he informed me that Delta Sonic Benderson would provide a 10-foot fence on both the 57 and 49 Winterset properties. And again, they had agreed to provide a 12-foot high fence in 1977, but my variance request for a 12-foot fence was denied, so obviously, they didn't have to do that. And I'm convinced that probably if I would have asked for a 10-foot fence back then, you guys may have said okay, because there was a 10-foot fence put up down on the Delta Sonic property. But that's water over the dam. And obviously, I was quite happy at the time that Mike had gone and said, "Yeah, we're going to put up the 10-foot fence on both properties." Well, everybody's got a boss, right? So, I was later informed by Benderson, Benderson's Jane Boglioli, that Benderson would not provide a 10-foot fence, and also, obviously, I brought up that conversation with Mike, he being a vice president of Delta Sonic, and so on and so forth. And at that time, he said that Mike Green was not available for comment. I was told by someone else that Mike Green was sick, and when I talked with Mr. Boglioli, a lawyer, he said that Mike Green was not available. For comment. By the way, I, throughout the whole process, I have kept Jim Costello up with the various emails that were transmitted back and forth, and so on and so forth. And if any of you cared to interrogate those emails, you can see what was transpired and what went through, and so on and so forth. Overall comment, I'm not surprised that that happened. They made a big spiel when they said that they would put up the 12-foot fence of having good neighbor relationships and so on and so forth, and obviously, over 20 years, and the fact that legally, when you look at the variance and so on, they have a legal right to stand on. They don't have to put up, they didn't have to put up the 12-foot fence, but they said they would, and they would have, I'm sure. They didn't have to put up the 10-foot fence. One of their people who was in charge, as far as I'm concerned, said it was okay. His boss said, "No." That's business. I understand that.
May I interrupt and ask you, who paid for the stump removal and the other work that was done between the fences? Did Delta Sonic pay for that?
For the what, excuse me?
I thought you said that there was a stump removal or some work done between the fences after you spoke with Mike Green.
Yeah.
Did Delta Sonic do that?
Yeah.
They paid for that? And so, when was that?
That was.
July, August?
No, no, that was, let's see, this was happening in July.
Around when?
It was around October.
Of 2017?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, again, there's so much volume of emails and so on.
Yeah, we've seen some of them, that's for sure.
Okay. So, in any event, I've accepted the fact that Benderson has no legal responsibility to provide a 10-foot fence, but they were ready to provide a 12-foot fence in 97.
97, yeah.
So, obviously, Mr. Boglioli has sent a letter in to you, and he copied me, and I would personally, if you grant this variance, and I would hope that you would, because it really only affects my property and my vision of what I can see from my patio and the rear of my house. The fence itself is non, where I'm raising it, is non-visible from Winterset Drive, and also, it's almost invisible from Penn Field Road in the front, because the Delta Sonic building blocks it. And Joe, I know you visited the property, so you could verify that. And Mike, I saw your card today.
I was there.
I had my wife at the dentist. You, somewhere around 10 o'clock?
I was there yesterday.
Oh, yesterday. So, again, to repeat, I would expect that Delta Sonic would still be required to maintain the eight-foot fence.
They say different, I'm sorry, Mike, but they say differently. I want, you're aware of that?
Well, I've got the letter and.
Just so you know, their position, as stated by their, Mr. Boglioli, or however you pronounce his name, is that because you modified the fence, they are not obligated to maintain any portion of it now. Whether or not that holds any water, who knows, but that's, he said that pretty, and I'm not saying he's right. I'm just telling you, I want, are you aware of that's what their position is?
Definitely. I've got the letter right in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah, he sent me a copy of the letter.
Okay.
So, that's good, and I would stick with my opinion that the portion that remains eight-foot should still be their responsibility for maintenance.
And again, I'm sorry, but you're willing to move forward with this application with that question being unanswered?
No.
Because let's say at the end of the day, you get your variance.
Yeah.
But a court of law says you got your variance, but now you, or whoever owns that house in the future, is required to maintain that 10-foot fence now. I'm not saying anything other than that's, that is a possibility here, and I want you to be fully informed of the ramifications of what we're doing tonight. And that, of course, doesn't have anything really to do with the issue of two more feet on your fence, is it going to make, is it going to make it better for you? Is it going to block your view more? You know, you haven't even gotten into that, but you did a little bit, and I assume that's what your position is going to be.
Right.
But I want you to be fully aware that their position is, they're not responsible to maintain that fence anymore. I'm not saying they're right, but that's what they're saying, and that possibly exists if you want to move forward with this application, and frankly, if you want to keep the modifications that you've already put up there.
Okay, you know, I understand all of that, and I would think that there might be some legality into them having to maintain the eight-foot portion of the fence.
And you may be right, but that may be a battle that you're fighting in another forum. And this board is, you know, there is an approval, as you've already cited, back from 1998, that says they have to maintain an eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
So, if we grant the variance and now there's a 10-foot fence.
Partial.
It's an open question.
Correct. It's an open question, and again, I just want to make sure you're aware, if you get what you're asking for tonight, you may be on the hook to maintain that entire.
I would think that that would be up to the board.
Not this board, no. And there's the rub.
Who, what board would it be up to?
It could be a New York State Supreme Court Justice.
That'd be interesting.
Court of competent jurisdiction.
That'd be interesting.
Well, maybe. I don't know.
Do you know, in the 20 years, as far as maintaining the fence, they have maintained my portion of the fence twice in 20 years, okay? They put some water repellent on it twice in 20 years.
I got you.
Okay?
Again, I'm just.
My neighbor is sitting here, he just bought the property.
What property?
In 20 years, they've maintained the fence one time.
I believe you. I don't, and I hear, and I understand why you're saying that. I just want you to be aware, if you get this variance granted tonight, and the issue of maintenance is open, like as Mike said, as it is today, Delta Sonic may very well say, "We're never maintaining that fence anymore," and somebody would have to go to court to force them to do that.
They've already indicated that that's their position.
Clearly.
I don't think he was aware at that time. He was thinking that there would be a 10-foot fence across the total property. There was no way for Jim Boglioli to know that the 10-foot fence was only going partially.
Here's what he says. "It is our position," meaning Delta Sonic's position, "that he," meaning you, "has violated our approval, and as such is now responsible for maintaining the fence he has altered." So, please understand, I'm not saying he's right. I just want, for the 10th time, I want to make sure that you are clear that if you get this variance as requested, you may be responsible for maintaining the whole 10-foot, the whole kit and caboodle, all the fence on your property.
Can I also add?
Yeah.
There's a letter here dated December 20th, 2017, from Mr. Boglioli to the board, in which it says, "It's our position that if the fence is altered by the property owner, you, in any way, including raising the height of the fence, the maintenance responsibility for that fence shifts to the property owner of 57 Winterset Drive, and Delta Sonic will not be responsible for maintaining the altered fence."
Any portion of it.
And Danny, can I add something?
Yeah.
You know, you talked about that this board has something to say. The only reason that we had anything to say about the fence back then was they were seeking an application, okay, for a variance, and that was part of their variance that they had to do. Right now, you're seeking a variance, and you're altering the fence that we made them put up. Are you, do you understand?
Okay.
Also in that.
And I'll tell you, I'm prepared to, I would have easily accepted that, all right, they do take care of their eight-foot portion, and I take care of the 10-foot portion, all right? That to me seems reasonable.
So, two feet for you?
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'll go one step further. It's no big deal to maintain the extra eight-foot portion. I mean, every five to 10 years, you have to wash it and spray it down with water repellent. They went 10 years before they did it the first time.
Right.
Unless it starts to fall down.
And they went 20 years on my partner's without doing it.
Unless it starts to fall down and deteriorate even further.
It's a good fence, I'll tell you.
It's a beautiful fence.
Whoever put the fence up did a damn good job.
Yeah. But, so, you know, what you just said is quite the commitment, and it, by the way, it would have ramifications to the person that owns the property after you. If we grant the variance with the condition that you, as property owner, now If we grant the variance with the condition that you, as property owner, now agree to maintain that entire fence, the person that comes after you is gonna have to live with that variance. And may, you know, may have to incur a lot of cost when the fence needs to be replaced, fixed, something beyond painted, or whatever, stained. I want you to be aware of that.
I am.
Okay.
That fence properly maintained will last 50 or 100 years.
Okay, so why don't you get in then to what you think the two extra feet, what purpose that'll serve? As I said, you've touched on it.
Well, again, if you take a look at the photos that I've sent to you, and what it's going to effectively do is block out the top of the buildings, the entrance to the oil change situation, and they just aren't gonna be visible. Right now, they're totally visible, and especially with the, in the past 10 years, the conifer-type trees have...
Come down.
Really taken a beating.
Yeah.
And I had a row of conifers in front of the fence that 10 to 15 years ago, you could hardly see the fence. That's how thick the conifers were. Today, it's very visible. And likewise, the back of the building and the signage is extremely visible from my patio and from anywhere in the back of the house.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions. First of all, can you specify what portion you want? You're asking for a variance.
Yeah.
How much of a variance? Where does the, how much are you raising? Where does, you know, what's the dimensions of what you're raising?
Well, as part of the application, I had a, I drew a map.
Yeah.
And I point some things out.
Sure.
Here's the code for the 10-foot fence, okay? It would run from here over to this area right here.
And the length of that?
The length of that is 43 feet. Okay? The total length of the fence is 120 feet.
From, and where does this start where you're raising?
This is our, my property line.
Yeah.
Right? In between 49 and 57 Winterset.
Yeah.
Obviously, the house. And this is the telephone pole that signifies the property line of Delta Sonic. So the existing fence sits this far back.
Right here.
And it goes over here. So you can see, and the building, Delta Sonic building, obviously, is right in that area. So from my house, when I look in this direction...
So where are you, this section here is 13.6?
Yes.
Between here and here?
You got it, yeah.
And then this is 9.42?
Yes, sir.
And this is 33.9?
Yeah.
From there to there?
Correct.
So it's a length of 42, 55, about 57 feet?
No, I didn't...
I'm just doing this fast. I don't know what 55 is.
Yeah, yeah, well, right to here is 43 feet. I'm actually, after I look at it, I'm probably gonna go just a little bit further if everything works out the way I want to.
Past where this?
No, no, just...
Pen?
Yeah.
Sure.
It's gonna potentially, maybe right to here. Okay?
So it's shorter than that?
It's a little, it's a little longer than this 33.9 plus 13. I'd say this is gonna be another, oh, another five foot roughly.
But aren't you going all the way to here?
No, no.
What's this 13.6?
That is the length of the fence existing.
Yeah.
That is eight foot high.
So that's five feet into that?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So that would be about five foot into it. So the total length of the new fence would be 33.9 plus 9.42 plus about five foot.
And how are you gonna determine where that starts? Where the telephone pole is?
No, no, this is, I've got dimension really off the, off the property line. If you really take a look at this, it's, obviously, it's about in the middle of my yard back Here's your total fence. Let's see if I got a photo of that. This point here, okay, where the, it's way over in this corner. This point here is right about...
How do we determine what that point is?
Uh, this one?
Yeah.
It's 15.5 plus 33.9 from this property line. See, I've got a dimension here, 15 and a half feet plus 33.9 feet. So that is roughly 33, 43, 48, 48, 50 feet from the property line. Okay? The total fence there is about 105, 110 feet.
You confused, Mike?
Yes.
All right, well, what he's asking is, what is the, if we give you a 10-foot variance, for how many feet do you need that? And you've kind of gone through your back-of-an-envelope calculation, but that's, that's something that...
It's gotta be defined.
Yeah, we need to...
A little better.
Yeah.
It's quite defined, right?
Okay.
I asked you to really take a look at it.
Yeah.
Well, that's open to debate, but let's go on.
So any other questions?
Yes. When we, I got two. We, as you know, when this was originally proposed, this took a good four to five months, as I recall. There was numerous meetings with neighbors, Delta Sonic, the town, and basically, the neighbors were pretty much on board with what was done there.
I had a petition go around, I went around the neighbors with a petition, was signed by all the neighbors that were close.
So basically, what I'm saying is, you agreed to an eight-foot fence, okay? And now you're coming back and you want to change that.
Why?
Why?
I think I was, I've been quite clear as to why. It's a, with the fence only being eight foot, it creates a visual dump in my backyard.
Well, because of changed circumstances, is that, I think that's, you've mentioned trees coming down. What has changed since '98?
To the gas station.
Well, what has changed, from your view, what has changed since '98? You've mentioned trees have come down, so...
The major, major change is the thinning of the trees.
Okay.
And...
I don't know if that's what you were getting at there, Mike.
It totally blocked the light when this was done originally?
Not totally.
So there was still some light coming through? It's just less light?
Light, yeah, and, but it almost, I'll tell you, it almost totally blocked the, during the day, the spruce trees and so on, the conifers were so thick at that time that it didn't allow me to see the building. Now I can see it fine. A 12-foot fence, if you'd have granted the variance, I think would have been too high.
A 12-foot fence is not on the table. We're not talking about a 12-foot fence.
Okay.
And that was, you know, some 20, 25 years ago?
Yeah.
You got another question, Mike?
The way, the way the fence got to be eight foot tall is Mike Green and so on from Delta Sonic had sat in my living room and, in my neighbor's living room, and said, "We will not remove any trees from in-between the two fences."
Mm-hmm.
None. And there's a drawing in your records of the plans that states, it's Sheet 7 of the drawing, it states clearly, "All trees to remain."
Okay.
Someone in the verbiage inserted the word "spruce trees." So they cut down all the deciduous trees that were in-between. The deciduous trees formed an extremely good block, visual block, from the, my house to the Delta Sonic building. And my, I have letters from my neighbor, Mr. Hicks, deceased, that directly staked to Delta Sonic that they had told him that they would not cut one tree down in-between the two areas.
When did they cut all these trees down? When?
When?
Yeah.
At the first start of the construction of the thing. They built the fence, that's when I agreed to the eight-foot fence with Mike Green. And it was on a stipulation that all the trees remain.
So like '99, 2000, that sort of time, shortly after getting approval?
Yeah, '97, really. They built the fence before they started any construction.
Okay.
One of the first things they did was knock down the fence, was knock down the trees.
The trees. Well, we should be able to verify that.
The other question I have is, your neighbor at 49?
Yes.
His property's some, and I'm just an estimate on my part, 20 feet lower than yours?
He's about five foot lower than mine.
Well, it looks like a heck of a lot more than five feet. But anyways, it's lower, significantly lower than your property. He's got an eight-foot fence along the back, same as you, and I'm not hearing any complaints from him about raising the fence. He'd probably have to put a 15-foot fence up.
That was one of, that was one of the reasons to go to the 12-foot fence. Because Mr. Hicks at that time, it's no 15-foot lower, it's about seven feet at best.
But it's seven more feet. It's as if he took the fence and knocked down seven feet and put a one-foot fence along your back line.
His fence isn't in question.
No, I'm just asking why he's not complaining and wanting to put a higher fence up.
You'll have to ask it.
I will, if he comes up.
Okay, you done, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, what's this picture show? Is there the eight-foot fence in there, or where is the 10-foot fence? Because this is probably some of the most important pictures.
Well, this is a nighttime picture. Here's the, here's the eight-foot fence. At that time, I...
Is the 10-foot fence in there?
Yeah, you can see where the opening is underneath here?
Yep, okay.
So that's the...
And what's here? So in other words, is this visually blocked more?
Oh, yeah, here's the, here's the...
The eight, and this is the 10.
Yeah, here's the eight. So you can see all the building, right? And here's the 10. You can't see it.
Okay. And that's where those bays are? You're talking about the oil bays, okay?
Right, right.
Okay, that's all I got.
I have that pen back?
Oh, some of it gone.
Yeah, it's my Jeremiah's pen. Anything else? Go ahead, Marie.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So I'm not hearing so much your concern about noise and light, so much as it is, you really don't want to see the building at all.
Well, put yourself in my eyes. And, you know, once you see something and you really don't appreciate it, if it remains there and it, and it, there's no, call it alleviation or whatever, it really starts to affect your mood. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to describe that.
Okay. So back to my question, though, you're not getting light pollution, you're getting, more you just don't want to see it. And then, but you had also said that a lot of those trees were taken down even way back around 2000. Is that so?
Well, before, before the buildings were constructed.
Okay.
They claimed that they needed it as a staging area for their equipment.
So they've been gone for a while?
Yeah. And it, well, it's part of the reason that Delta Sonic, if I had the means at that time, I'm sure that I could have got lawyers involved and made something, because they made specific promises that none of the deciduous trees would be cut.
I got a question. What are you gonna do, assuming this is granted, what are you gonna do with the, with the gap underneath?
Oh, I'm going to put two-foot, two-foot planks underneath. It's gonna look, it's gonna look, for all intents and purposes, as like a, like a 10-foot fence.
So you're gonna put the same kind of wood?
Exactly. It's number two, pressure-treated, one-by-six, pressure-treated lumber.
Okay. That's all I have.
You may, you may ask why I don't do the whole fence? Because I can't see the building from the other part. Also, there's a monetary consideration. It's gonna cost me at least 500 and a lot of labor.
If you end up having to maintain the fence...
Don't get in it, Mike. Let him, let him get in it at with, in some other court.
It's fine with me. Hey, like I said, how hard is it to wash a fence and stain it with a power sprayer?
Well, you'll find out.
Well, you know, we're being a little facetious, but they're, again, it's, it's at the risk of saying it 17 times.
Yeah.
It's, a variance runs with the land. What that means is that every property owner that succeeds you is burdened, if you will, with that obligation. So I know you said it's gonna last 100 years.
I'll let them know when I sell it.
Well, yeah.
And if they, if they don't want to take it, they don't have to buy my property.
So the only question I have is, if you get this approved, when would you, when would you do this?
I would...
You have to wait till the spring, or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the board? Okay, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up.
Troy Bridges, 49 Winterset Drive. I am the adjacent property to Dick's with the rest of the eight-foot fence. I understand Dick's concerns with the light pollution that he has at his elevation. He can see the approach for Delta Sonic, if you will. All the cars that come into Delta Sonic basically face his property, high beams or low beams. If he does obscure that corner, it'd probably obscure the building and probably the approach. Me and my wife do not have any problem with him doing the current suggested modifications to his fence. We do not want to touch our fence and kill the golden goose that will repair our fence and maintain it whenever we ask. I want that underscored. That is a large monetary concern. As you said, it goes to the next property owner, and I will sell that back to the next property owner. You call Delta Sonic, they will send over people to wash and stain your fence on request.
Okay.
We have a good working relationship with Delta Sonic. I could text the GM right now if I wanted to.
When did you buy the property?
September-ish of last year.
Okay.
So we've only been there a year. We were not around for the original considerations of them expanding. We bought in knowing everything. And when Dick approached Delta Sonic last summer, I think, about staying the fence and such, we became involved from a, we wanted to make sure that they would not have people on our property and we would have liability with those people. We made them prove their liability insurance to us, so they could have people on my property and my wife's property. And they satisfied that and satisfied us with the maintenance of the fence. We had broken sections of boards and a lot of dirt, because as Dick said, mine was only washed once over the history of it. And we're very happy with it. Would two feet stop the light pollution that comes into our yard? Absolutely. Do I want it? No. Because I don't want the monetary consideration of having to deal with that fence for the rest of it.
Right, you're talking about on your property.
I am the property that is the...
No, I understand. When you say you don't, you don't want to, you're talking about your fence.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't care if he has a 10-foot fence as requested?
Not in the way that he...
As long as it doesn't affect you.
Yes.
Okay.
We're in agreement of where he does that, so that it doesn't affect our sightline. He has about approximately eight and a half feet of fence that is on my, in my sightline, if you will.
Yeah.
My fence is a straight line, and then the last eight and a half feet on his side goes uphill and into his property. And he's stated that he wouldn't touch that, so that it wouldn't, I wouldn't have to look at the bottom section that he's adding. From that point around the corner, he can add whatever he wants. It won't affect our visual sightline, really.
Okay.
It would just look like the fence jogged a little bit. Um, it would just look like the fence jogged a little bit more, and we're fine with that. Because of his concerns with the light pollution.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little bit confused on the exact, uh, and, and we may be able to, if we were inclined to grant this, I guess one of the things I'd suggest is we table it so we know exactly that we would be approving the variance at the beginning point and the ending point exactly as you, you have described up here, and you have said you're okay with, and the board would be okay with.
Yep.
Especially if we're not going to do it to the spring.
Okay.
Which is why I asked that question.
As the owner, I believe, and my wife believes too, Dick can do whatever he wants with that fence, but in a way it would be killing the golden goose. That fence across both of our properties is at least a Hyundai Sonata or something. It's a twenty-grand fence with eight-by-eight posts.
Pretty heavy.
It's well-built.
Just so you know, by the way, I haven't seen anything that leads me to believe that Delta Sonic is taking the position that if he gets a variance
That your fence.
That they're off the hook for maintaining years. I haven't seen that. But that's a good question to ask.
That would be a question I will ask.
I don't see how they can make that argument.
And I would fight the variance at that point.
I understand.
Not having my fence become part of that.
Fair enough. Go ahead, Marie.
Well, that was exactly my point, which was, I just wanted to be clear that if this variance was granted, that it wouldn't affect any other property.
I don't think anybody wants that.
Yeah.
Right.
So, but, but a fair question to ask, and we should make sure.
Okay.
Before we do anything, that we know the. Anything else for this gentleman?
I'd like to also state that since I am the center, there's three of us that are basically behind the Delta Sonic car wash.
Yeah.
Our property is dead center. I have all of it in my purview at all times out the back of my house. All the signage, you can see across the top. Their lights are off at nine-thirty at night. If they're not, I will text someone and their lights will be off five minutes later. Because it is a substantial amount of light that comes into my property. It's kind of nice. Unless they leave the lights on, I'm trying to go to bed. But they're very receptive to talking and living up to their stated things, like having their tower lights off at a certain time. I understand if they have maintenance, they need to have them on. I don't call all the time. I might have called once or texted once.
By the way, in the ninety-eight application, I tried to get them to take that tower down, but it didn't work.
I'm just glad they fixed it so it says "car wash" and not just "wash" anymore.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Anything else?
So I'll be getting any kind of variance things so that I can come to these forums when necessary?
If your properties.
On this application? Yeah, it's probably going to be tabled tonight, to be honest with you. So we'll, we'll bring it up again next month.
I just want to be kept in loop with anything to do with it.
Well, you could call anytime.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? All right, very good, thank you. Next application, please.
Ernest Pritchard, Sun Common, three-eighteen Timothy Lane, Ontario, New York, one-four-five-one-nine. Requests an area variance from chapter two-fifty dash five-point-one dash F dash one of the code to allow the installation of a solar PV system with less setback than permitted at fifteen Waybridge Court. Property is owned by Laura Humphrey and Jay Mahoney.
I know.
And zoned RR dash one, SBL number one-zero-nine-point-zero-two dash one dash four-six. This is application number eighteen Z dash zero-zero-zero-two.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is John Bopp, and I am here in place of Ernest Pritchard, speaking on behalf of Sun Common, New York. We will be installing the solar system for Jay and Laura at fifteen Waybridge Court. We do our best, uh, our, our efforts to keep our customers happy. We do our best to comply with their wishes for the system placement where they would like to see it placed, and in so doing, we ask that you grant this variance on behalf of our clients. We're asking to build the ground mount solar array within the thirty-foot setback on the rear property line. We do realize they are zoned as RR, as a rural residential district, and in so doing, or being zoned that way, it's to provide a transition or a buffer area between the agricultural and suburban areas. In the rear of their property, there is a pre-existing berm and drainage ditch, which we kind of feel is a pre-existing transition or buffer area. We also would have to, this has to be a ground mount on their property. The estimated production for the residents would not be able to be covered by any type of roof-mounted panels. Also, the south-facing roofs on that property would actually be facing the front of the street and would actually be a lot more visually impactful to the surrounding community than a ground array would tucked back in the corner of their property. We propose a twenty-module system. The ground mount itself would not exceed thirty-four feet in length, and at the highest, highest point it could possibly be, it would be a nine-foot. Also, I believe our clients are planning to build a privacy fence around the property as well, which would offer even more visual protection and, and make it even less impactful for their neighbors and the surrounding community.
Six, six-foot height?
Yes, yep.
Okay. But, but part of it, you say maybe as high as nine feet?
It can be. That usually depends upon the ground levels to.
So let's assume it's level.
Okay, let's assume it's level, then it would probably be around seven feet high.
All right. Okay.
So at this time, I mean, I was only able to present to you specifics about the system and about the property that we plan on building and why it needs to be a ground mount versus a roof mount. At this time, I ask that the homeowners themselves can come up and present to you any specific hardships as to why we would need that variance.
Thank you.
I'll stick around for any questions as well.
That's right.
Thanks, John. And thank you for allowing us to request the variance. Just as by, by way of a little bit of background, this is primarily a cul-de-sac area. There's eleven properties total in the overall cul-de-sac. I believe that there are currently, um, two vacant lots still, one to our east and then one up further that's out of sight from us. There's one home that is built, it's a model, but it's currently, um, for sale, unoccupied. So generally speaking, there's probably, um, five total properties that can see our backyard. There is a sixth property, um, that is, um, fronts Jackson, and it's a very, I'm sure you've seen it, it's a very large home with a very large piece of property. John talked about the berm that's in our backyard. I would think that that berm probably runs anywhere between seven, eight, nine feet high. And so, um, we're looking at, at, at that in terms of the, the reason that we want to move this back within the thirty-foot setback that's required. If we bring it up fully to the thirty-foot setback requirement, that effectively cuts us off from about seven hundred square feet of our property, based on, you know, the, the length and depth of.
And, and to interrupt you to ask, what is the total square footage of your property?
Oh, that's a great question. All these, all these properties are just a little plus or minus an acre. Ours is a little less than an acre, but
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know what the exact square footage of our property.
All right, the reason I'm asking is, you know, what, seven hundred square feet is what percentage of your total acreage? That's, we can figure it out.
I can figure it out for you, but I can't do it in my head.
No, same here, that's why I asked you.
Without embarrassing myself.
Okay, all right.
The other, the other issue, of course, would be that, you know, by bringing it that much forward into our, you know, towards the house, um, it begins to impact on any other things that we might want to do in our backyard. That we talked about was the possibility of putting, you know, an in-ground pool. So that would have an impact on that as well. So, by, by pushing it back, we think a couple of things are, are satisfied. If we have it, and trying to think about it this way, the, the people who are going to be most, who would be most likely to see this would be the people, would be the people next to us on either side, and the people who have their house, uh, fronting Jackson, and.
If you have a map and you want to put it up there, if that helps you, that's fine.
John, do you have some of those?
Yeah, I got some.
Why don't you just give it to them?
Survey. And that's on top of the layout, and then beyond that, there should be overlay on the satellite photo, and then the layout without the site survey.
Okay.
So with the, with the berm there, um, in terms of the people who front Jackson, the closer it is to the berm, actually from a line of sight, the less they'll be able to see it. The further it comes towards our house, the greater the visual impact is for them. So by enforcing the, the thirty-foot setback, we're actually increasing their ability to see that from where they're, from their perch, because the berm itself creates, um, a visual blockage the closer you get to the berm. Am I making myself clear with that?
You are, I'm just trying to, uh, I'm trying to visualize it. Can you, can you draw that on the?
The, the berm?
Yeah.
Our, our yard is flat, and their yard is flat, and it's higher.
No, I get it. And I also understand that as you move the, the solar panels, if you will, further away from the berm, it's gonna
It's gonna be more visible.
Somebody over here may be gonna be able to see it more. I, I get it.
I'm not responsible for drawing.
No, that's okay.
So this is the berm.
Yeah.
Except this is higher.
This is our, yeah, this is not fully the scale. This is our house, this is their house. I think that their house probably sits back, I'm gonna guess, a hundred and fifty feet, plus or minus.
Okay.
Or more.
So, you know, if we have the solar panels here, obviously, I mean, here you can see, the closer they are, closer the solar panels are to the house, the more visually accessible they are to this house over here.
And, and it may have already been stated, if so, I apologize. What's the distance between the berm and the back property line? Around?
I'm sorry, is it here, here?
No, back property.
Your back property line.
The berm.
It's at the base of the berm.
The berm sits pretty much right on the property line.
I see, okay.
And there's a stone fence on the other side.
Yeah, all right. And how much space, if you have the panels where you would like them to be, how much space between the panels and the berm?
I think we probably would want to go to about ten feet, which, um.
For maintenance and that sort of thing, it'd make it easier?
It's below one behind there in case we need to require anything.
Okay.
And the safety, you know, the safety goes with our, with our neighbors here. That's, that's a vacant lot, but our neighbors here, they're just moving in. Obviously, the closer you move it towards the houses, the more visually impactful.
It just seems like it'd be more than five feet from the line, then.
More than five feet?
Right, you're requesting that the, that the solar panels be within how many feet of the property line? I thought five.
Ten.
No, ten.
Ten, okay, all right. So you got the berm, and then you have that space between the berm and the solar panels, and that's going to be about, about ten feet?
About ten.
Yes.
Okay, I got you, thank you.
The other thing to consider is, especially when you think about this time of year and the angle of the sun, you can't plant up to, um, the edge of the array. You have to set back because as the sun drops, if you have a tall tree, it's going to throw a shadow. So that moves us closer and closer to the house if we have to adhere to the setback as it's written, which limits what we can do in terms of landscaping and, um, potential his pool.
Okay. All right. You mentioned in your application the possibility of putting, and, and your representative did as well, about a fence around it. Would you be willing, and that, would that be strictly for buffer purposes?
Actually, it was just, it was originally thought of just for privacy purposes. We haven't priced that out yet.
Okay.
And we have dogs, so.
So if you do, if you put that fence up, it wouldn't just be a fence around the solar panels, it would be your whole lawn?
It would be around the yard.
Okay.
That was a fence that we were thinking about.
Well, you know, you certainly have a right to do that anytime regardless of this application, but okay. All right. What I was going to ask, if, if the answer to that question had been yes, you're going to build a fence around the solar panels, would you be willing instead to put up trees as a buffer because of a fence around?
Yeah, well, the, the, if, the fence around the solar panels just by themselves, I don't think would, would really.
No, that's why, honestly, I was looking at it and saying, what the heck is?
It'd be problematic for the sunlight.
There's built-in fencing in the unit itself that protects, um, any children from touching it and whatnot, but we would add separately a privacy fence.
How about, um, would you be willing to consider putting some bushes or trees on top of the berm to build that up even more?
Yes.
We, we've been on our side, and I know that our neighbor to the north has been putting some new growth trees on their side as well.
So in effect, that berm may even grow because of the vegetation?
Yeah, there's some, like I said, there's some old growth trees on there that go from the top of the berm, probably, I'm gonna guess, forty, thirty?
They're deciduous, though.
Thirty, forty feet.
Yeah.
Not so much of a cover in the wintertime. He's putting up, uh, new
Evergreens.
Evergreen trees.
Okay. So, um, thank you for, let me tell you some concerns that I have about this application, is that to a certain extent, it's theoretical. And this, and this is what I mean by that. We want to put the solar panels here because of what we may do in the future. Swimming pool.
Okay.
Right? If you.
Well, and the trees.
Well, no, it's that, and I, and I heard that tonight, I didn't, I didn't see that in that written application, but that's fine, too. But as opposed to saying what we may do, or, we have applications all the time where people ask, let's say a shed, to put a shed closer to the property line than permitted because they have a deck, or they have a porch, or they have a pool already, or they're under contract to have one, and therefore their usable space has shrunk even more. And I appreciate, you guys aren't, you know, new and all that stuff, so you may put a pool, you may not. But if you don't have a pool, for whatever reason you decide not to do it, you have a lot more area in your yard where you, where you can put this without a variance, right?
It'll be much more visible.
I, I, and that's a very important point, and that's why we're, we're talking about the trees and stuff, but I just, I, uh, it's a little, it makes our job a little tougher to say yes based upon something you may do if one of the reasons is, hey, we want to use our yard for other things, maybe.
Independent of whether or not we have a pool, we lose the space behind the panels. They're no longer visible, and if they're set back thirty feet, that piece of the yard is behind the array.
Oh, I, I understand, I understand. But I was talking more about the area between the arrays in your house.
Did he pay you to talk about this? Because he wants the pool.
Now, yeah. Yeah, I get, but you, you get the point.
Yeah, I, I.
Everybody wants to use as much of their yard as they can. Everybody wants to put the shed in the corner. But the law says you gotta have a ten, a shed, ten feet from the line, and it's.
Well, and, you know, and to that point, we're not asking to go, you know, any further than what a shed could go.
A shed is.
No, I understand, I understand.
You know, a tennis court could go.
Right, I get it.
These are, this is a relatively new sort of request, I would think. I'm not aware that there's been too many solar panels.
Not, nor much. And I like the idea that, you know, I'd like that you're willing to add to the top of the berm to.
I've already started. I've put five small evergreens in, and I will get more.
So one thing I definitely want to clarify, because I'm looking at some paperwork here. You're asking, what is the size of the variance you are requesting?
We're asking to be, instead of 30 feet, we're asking to be 10 feet.
So a 20-foot variance.
20-foot variance, okay.
Okay. Because this does say five, but that's, could be a tight one. In any event, you've made it clear now, 10. One of the requirements that the law imposes upon us is to grant the minimum variance we, we can or should. So I'm gonna ask you, how far are you willing to move it toward your house? And if the answer's no further than you're proposing, that's fine. I just wanted to ask you that.
I would say no further than what we're proposing.
Yeah, I think that that's pretty much where we're at.
If you, if we were to deny the variance, are you still gonna put these up?
I don't know.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, I don't have.
Oh. Are there any drainage issues created by putting something there and disturbing the land?
We don't think so. There's no significant drainage issues.
If you want to come up and comment on that, feel free.
It's extremely minimally environmentally impactful when we construct these arrays. We'll be utilizing a ground screw system. Ground screws will be screwed into the ground at a depth of five feet or more, and then long thin rails will be put into those vertical posts and then the panels on top of them, ultimately making an extremely lightweight but extremely strong aluminum structure. And there's been no specific, any types of like drainage issues or anything. We haven't had any issues like that with any of our ground.
So you're not really, you're not really setting a foundation down or anything like that?
No, no. In years previous, we used to have to bring back large excavators, auger down holes seven feet in the ground, drive a concrete truck.
Yeah. I think that's the last one I've seen was an older model.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nowadays, we just have a small Bobcat unit. We have some nice little ground screw attachments. They screw right in. We also have trenching attachments for our Bobcat as well. So as far as excavation goes, it's not a huge bucket digging up or tearing up their lawn. It's just a small seven-inch ditch that's being, just directing it exactly where we need to be. It's very minimally environmentally impactful.
Okay. And then you said it was about 34 feet in length.
Mm-hmm.
What is it in width?
Um, width? Well, the panels themselves would be five feet, five feet, so if they were laying flat, it'd be 10. But they're going to be positioned at an optimal angle to the sun.
Right.
So this distance from here to here is approximately five and a half to six and a half feet.
I should have paid attention in geometry.
That's what I was just thinking.
And again, and again, the ground mounts are much more efficient. If, if we did have to mount them on the roof, again, we can't mount enough panels on their, the available roof space for them to cover what their home usage would be. But also in that case, we are also building those panels flush mounted to the roof. So we are within the constraints of their existing angles to the sun and things like that. Whereas when we build a ground mount out in the, out in the yard, we can have it face perfectly 180 degrees south, and we can have that angle perfectly perpendicular to the sun throughout the year, so we can get the maximum exposure and maximum production for them.
Sure.
Can I just get one other quick thing to go back to your point about the, the 10 feet?
Right.
It's the, it's the back mounts that would be at the 10 feet. So the front, you know, we're not talking about building within the 10 feet. The back mounts would be the, would be the 10-foot.
The closest part to the back.
That's the starting point.
The closest part to the, to the, to the.
Property line.
Back would be, would be the back of it.
Okay.
Do you have to have access to other people's property to install this?
No.
No?
No, we have plenty of.
Okay. So my question, maybe it's, it's really, maybe Andy, we're gonna be seeing more and more of these kinds of applications, I would think.
I'm gonna ask.
Right? As solar becomes more and more.
Yeah, if you have more solar installed.
Is our code, does it, do we have to revisit the code at some point?
Possibly.
I, I missed that. What was the question? I'm sorry.
Is the code gonna address this?
Because I think it'll be.
Solar panels?
Right.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a good.
I mean, there's, I think, a larger issue, which is we're gonna see more and more of this, and I think it should be encouraged.
Right.
So do we keep up with this? It's not a question for this.
It looks like Marie's gonna go to the next town board meeting.
In a lot of the, in a lot of the permitting jurisdictions that we do work in, these solar ground mounts are considered accessory structures, just like a shed or a pool or other things like that, and most often they're treated very similarly.
Thank you.
I think our neighbors will be jealous.
Well, speaking of that, do you, you don't have neighbors on either side now?
No.
We have, we have one neighbor on, on our west side.
They haven't moved in.
They've just closed.
Have you talked with them about this?
Not specifically, but there's been a sun common sign on the front yard for a couple months.
Okay, and on the other side, who owns that? Still a developer?
Nick DeAngelis still owns it.
Have you talked with him about that?
Yeah, we've talked to them. We've actually had a couple conversations about it. They haven't expressed any negative opinions about it whatsoever.
Okay.
So what would the, what would, by installing this array, is this giving you more some, of something than the, than like the community solar program, for example?
I talked to that specifically.
Yes, yeah. Ideally, the community solar program you can buy in and out of, and community solar is more for people who have homes that cannot incorporate either a ground mount or a roof mount on it.
That would be me.
Yeah. The community solar we would offer to people who's, hey, yeah, you have a perfectly south-facing roof, but there's too many trees around here, it offers too much shade. Or if you live in an apartment complex or townhomes, then.
So this is still preferable to a community, is what I hear you saying?
Indeed.
Okay. All right.
Because after a certain amount of years, that system is 100% theirs. It's a full 25-year system, but after a few years, it's gonna be 100% paid for. So any energy created by that system's gonna be 100% theirs.
Thank you.
So getting back to the buffering issue now, so, so you're, you're gonna have neighbors on both sides as, as opposed to the neighbors whose house you drew there, right?
Right, we have neighbors right here.
Okay, are you willing to put buffering on the ends of the solar arrays, too, sort of, in terms of vegetation? Not affect, yeah?
As long as it doesn't block, yeah.
The effect, yeah, it's not gonna affect the workability of the panels. But just, your neighbors on either side of you will be looking at trees, let's say, or bushes instead of solar panels.
I think currently, my wife looks at her backyard as a blank slate, waiting for her to start growing.
Well, that's okay. Okay, anything else from the board? Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up.
Hi.
Chair.
I'm John Gibbs at 14 Jackson, 1445 Jackson Road. I just wanted to expand. We live in the house back behind.
You're the owner. It's nice to meet you.
Just from an elevation standpoint, it wasn't a man-created berm. It was actually a natural shift there that was much more gradual. That's where the horse farm was initially, the wave farm. And when they developed the old wave farm, they excavated that all out. They undermined a bunch of big trees. I think that's a potential problem for you, because if those trees fall, they're gonna be on your solar array. We were required not to touch the trees nor the, I would call it a stone fence as opposed to a berm, to, to maintain the buffer. And I believe our builder also told us that DeAndre was not supposed to touch the berm either. But from my interpretation, it's pretty steep back there. If our kids fell off of there, I think they'd get hurt. I'm not sure how much it's eroded or not. The point being is, I think as you bring that back closer, you have a potential problem with the trees. The other thing is, if we ever do develop back and we place a road there, I don't know how that affects our ability to place a road or a drive, you know, how far from a structure, that being a solar array. I don't know that answer. But I, I don't have any problem, to be honest with you, seeing, seeing the solar array being raised up, because it essentially, essentially acts as a fence, you know? So it could be as high as you want it to be from my standpoint, but, you know, so when you look at this, if you're, you know, erect it, it's kind of like this, and we set up here. So we're looking down and, you know, the further you bring it away, agree, it blocks our view more, but I, it's, so far, it doesn't really matter.
Right, yeah.
But those were the only couple of points I want to make. My biggest concern is the stability of the, the embankment, because it's not truly a berm. It's not built up. It's actually excavated out. I think that's a potential problem in the future.
Well, the trees, obviously, the trees are becoming, but that's, that's something that we have.
I understand. I just want.
So I guess what I, I appreciate that information. How does it affect your opinion, if you have one, about the variance request?
I love the trees. They're deciduous trees. I mean, we don't have much of a screen at this point, and that's why I'm trying to place a little, you know, I'm just basically transplanting trees from the back that are, you know, evergreens. But, you know, my, my thought was also to place a fence and, and, you know, back in the day, I thought I'd have some cows and such, but I just don't have enough time to do it. But, you know, I, we were thinking about a solar array as well, you know, on the north side of our property, same, same kind of concept. But, you know, I, I just don't know how it affects the ability for us to develop that land if our kids move into the back of our property someday, which probably won't happen, but it'd be nice to think that the, the house is back behind us, but.
Well, how, how much land do you own? You're talking about a road and a house?
We're 32 acres.
32 acres.
We're 32 acres there.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Wow.
So we back up to the 1,000-acre swamp, but it's, it's basically a straight line back. That, that, that property line's pretty much straight there. And that's about the only place where we undermined it that much. The rest of them seem more gradual, but I think you probably noticed that it's, it's pretty steep. And my answer is, that was probably the wrong answer, to excavate it out like that. If it was actually left the way it was, you could actually have your solar array higher, and there'd be less of an issue from, you know, from a potential problem of, you know, it, it being destroyed by trees. Those, those trees are huge, and I'm pretty sure that it's gonna affect their, their ability to stay upright.
You're talking about the thing that's already there, not, not our solar panel.
Right, 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 yeah.
That's, that's a risk we have to assume.
And I don't know where the property line ends, to be honest with you.
There's a stake at the, at the base of the berm. I don't know if that's the property line, because the berm literally goes up at the stake. It could be in the middle of the berm.
Gotcha.
So without wanting to put words in your mouth, but also realizing it's 8:30, is it fair to say that you're okay with the application where it is now, but you're sort of letting them know there could be an issue, trees could fall on their solar panels?
Right. Those trees, I'm pretty sure, are on my property.
Oh, okay.
However, it was a stipulation of us building not to disturb that, that berm and stone fence, I believe they said about a 20-foot on either side, which if, if the line is truly there, it's been disturbed 20 feet on the other side, which has undermined the trees.
Okay.
Which I, again, think is a problem, but, and I don't want to take the trees down. I really don't want to, but they're beautiful trees, but I have a feeling they, they might die.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
No, good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience care to speak about this? Anybody know if school's canceled tomorrow?
It is.
I was waiting for him to answer. It was pretty quick. Okay. You can always study at home. Oh, man, okay, great. Nobody else in the audience, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next application, please.
Troy Bassett, FreeChurch.net, 260 Embry Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request a special permit under Chapter 250-10.3-A, Chapter 250-2.2, Chapter 250-10.11-J, Chapter 250-10.11-M, and Chapter 250-10.20-A of the Code to allow temporary signs within the rights-of-way of Creek Street and Embry Road. The properties are owned by the County of Monroe and the Town of Penfield and are zoned R-1-20, SBL 108.11-1-1.1. This is application number 18Z-0003.
Anybody here on number three?
Thank God. See ya.
Let's go to number four.
Nicholas Ostrowski, 1305 Mill Creek Run, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a conditional use permit under Chapter 250-13.3 and Chapter 250-5.5-C-1-G of the Code to allow a barber shop and a special permit under Chapter 250-10.3-A and Chapter 250-10.12-D of the Code to allow an expansion to an existing freestanding sign with less front setback than permitted at 2217 Penfield Road. Property's owned by Jonak Incorporated and zoned business, non-retail. This is SBL 140.01-2-9. This is application 18Z-0006.
How you doing? I'm Nicholas Ostrowski, 1305 Mill Creek Run, Webster. Start with the easier one. To add on to the variance we received for the freestanding sign, I was here a couple months ago, you guys approved it to be equal from the setback that the doctor's office to the east of us, so that our, our freestanding sign would be the same distance back as theirs. In my application, I did not specify the size, or I did, but it's smaller than my original application was. I think the variance application stated a two-and-a-half-by-five-foot sign. I intended for it to be, I think it's 20 square foot, four by five, which I think is still within the code.
I think you were talking about the two signs together.
Yeah, the total signage would be four foot by five.
So one, one would be two by five, and then the other sign would be two feet by five feet, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay. But then you also have a conditional use permit.
Yep.
For a barber shop.
Yes.
Maybe, tell us about that.
That barber shop is actually run by my brother-in-law, and the, the space that he's in is previously used as a beauty salon.
Okay.
So I think we had actually called the zoning department. My wife had called, I had called, my brother-in-law had called. We'd all received the same information that, no, you're switching from female clientele to male clientele, shouldn't be a problem. So.
Okay.
He's actually been operating out of there for a few months.
Oh, okay.
On a salon, you get more money.
I wouldn't know.
Can you tell us, so you're applying for two things, a conditional use permit for the barber shop and then also adding?
The signage.
The signage. Okay. Tell us about the barber shop in terms of how many hours? Can you tell us a little bit about the business?
Monday through Friday. He prefers appointments. He schedules in 30-minute intervals.
Uh-huh.
I would be roughly nine to seven. He did say nine to four on a couple of days, but he was working and I were working, and I don't recall which days it was.
And then.
But like I said, right now it's Monday through Friday. Single owner-operator. He is state-licensed.
So just one chair?
Yep.
Okay, and only one staff person, then?
Just the owner, yep.
Okay. And just five days a week, no weekends?
Not right now.
Okay. And then just one client at a time?
Yep.
Do you feel that you have adequate parking, given, so maybe two people at a time for the barber shop, and then I'm not sure how many are accommodated for the grooming?
The grooming is set up the same way, where they actually are appointment-only.
Okay.
Where there's two garage spots that my wife actually does park in when she's there and she's working. and she's working. The other staff members do have accessibility to that. The dog grooming doesn't usually work, there's usually two people at a time. The barber doesn't drive, so that parking really shouldn't be that big of an issue.
Okay.
I think right now with the way that the lot is striped, I think there's eight or nine spaces. Plus again, there's also the garage.
I think so. There was snow on the ground and I couldn't really tell.
Yeah.
So, okay. Those were all the questions I had.
And yeah, no, any other questions from the board?
Anyone from the public? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, anybody else from the audience?
Want to speak?
Do you want to talk longer?
You don't have?
I think you're done.
We're good with it.
Thank you.
All right, Andy.
Okay, next one.
Randy Beevout, TY Lynn International, 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Agor Enterprises, request a parking lot expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming use under Chapter 250-7.13-C of the code at 951 Panorama Trail South. The property is owned by Agor Enterprises and is zoned limited industrial, SPL number This is application 18Z-0001.
Good evening. If I can approach the board, I want to provide an area.
Sure, sure.
I was going to put it on a big drawing, but our fodder unfortunately was not operating.
If you've got an extra one, you may want to put one up on the clips too.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'll talk about a flag lot.
Good evening. I'm Randy Beevout with TY Lynn International. I'm here on behalf of Agor Enterprises. With me is Mark Agor. We're here tonight asking the board for approval to expand the pre-existing non-conforming use for 951 Panorama Trail. And as part of this project, Agor Enterprises is, has a pending contract to purchase 945 Panorama Trail to essentially add to his property ownership, which would change from, currently it's about 2.56 acres. It would add an acre to that, so it would be a total of 3.56 acres. The purpose of adding the property is to expand the parking area. Currently, it may not be totally clear in the aerial, but we have an asphalt driveway that comes up into the building. We have asphalt along the back of the building and the rest of it is essentially crushed stone. The new parking area would be constructed with crushed stone. The new parking area, which is outlined on this plan in blue, the reason that it's, that area is about 22,000 square feet, a little bit more, a little less than 23,000, excuse me. The perimeter areas of that blue is taken up by the stormwater quality features to address the, the crushed stone, which is viewed as, essentially as impervious. The blue, currently his property, the back part of his property, from behind the building and around the back part and sort of wraps around the front on the paycheck side, is, has a chain-linked fence that encloses the property. So when we, expanding the property, we would continue that chain-linked fence around the new property and essentially remove, remove the portion that's here. So it would be totally enclosed. We're not, not proposing any new lighting as part of this, and this is really just for his business use to park additional vehicles. As you can see by the aerial, it has quite a few vehicles back there. Reason for this request is to allow for his, you know, allow for the future growth of the, of the business. I would note that there, I mentioned that he has a pending contract working with the current property owner. That contract actually expires on January 15th. The town has been very gracious in working with us. We went through the planning board approval process. We were at the planning board meeting on December 14th. The planning board granted preliminary final site plan approval condition on this board, granting the necessary variance to expand the pre-existing non-conform, non-conforming use. There really is no negative impacts as a result of this expansion. We have paychecks in this direction. There's quite a slope here, great difference between paychecks and the Agor property. There's a fairly good slope here. You know, I don't know the potential future use of that property. And then behind this, I understand this has been approved or as a future industrial, I think it's industrial subdivision development. So the, again, the property is one acre. It's, it has mainly here, but it does have this flag, which we worked with the town trying to figure out some of the, the ownership and there was, the way it was originally subdivided, I guess as part of this development was a little tricky, but we've, we've worked through that. So he's been working at this a long time to try to get this property and that, again, it would be very beneficial to his business. And with that, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Are you going to combine both these parcels?
Yes.
Into one?
Yes.
So it'd be one tax parcel?
Yes, and I do have the subdivision map with me if, if anybody needs to see that.
So in essence, that flag is gone?
That's correct. That flag would disappear. That would, it would all be part of one property.
What, what's the purpose of parking the vehicles there? I mean, what's the business that involves the?
You want to speak to that?
We, we build wheelchair-accessible vans, so we're just growing and need expansion, so.
But how, but, so are those our vans that are parked there primarily or?
I mean, different vehicles. I mean, we, we, we build, like I said, wheelchair vans, but then we'll have dealerships where vehicles need hand controls put in or left-hand accelerator or, you know, just different modifications. So it'll be all different types of vehicles.
So these would be vehicles you're working on?
Correct.
Okay, you're not storing or potentially?
No.
This is all stuff you're currently working on?
Correct, yep.
And what's the visibility from Panorama Trail? Will there be any? Can you see the vehicles?
I mean, there's a lot of buffer.
Yeah, you can see there's, there's a fair amount of vegetation here.
It's really hard to tell just looking from the street.
Yeah, there's a fair amount of vegetation here and as part of the, the planning board process, we did talk about that particular item here and, and with paychecks. We, you know, again, they granted the approval. There is a stipulation in there that we're going to look at this potential buffering, actually during construction after the, the clearing is done. You know, there's, you can sort of see on the map, I mean, there is some existing vegetation here that has to be cleared to construct the parking area, but also there's some vegetation in here between the blue and the red that has to be cleared to provide the stormwater quality features. But everything would be, you know, the clearing would be contained within his particular property.
Did I understand you to say that this increases the impervious surface?
It, it does.
Yeah.
But again, it's gravel, but the Rondacoy Creek watershed stormwater requirements require you to design that as if it's.
Impervious, as if it was.
Because the soils are actually very good here. So we, our stormwater is using infiltration as part of the stormwater treatment.
But, but if you guys don't care about that, I would take more property.
Yeah, the first question I got was why is the box so small? I don't, I just, you know, understandably is a valid question.
Was that by your client or by the? And then you, I assume there's going to be some grading involved as well, right?
Yes. It, this actually, yeah, actually the, the blue area is actually, we're basically putting that grade. We're not really changing the grade. We're changing the grade on the, the three sides, here, here, and here, only to create the stormwater features. We have a four bay, we have a little infiltration trench, and then we have a little pond.
So.
Starts here and it sort of wraps around this and there's a, an existing outfall ditch that runs along here that we're.
I assume you're also relieving some of the congestion you have now in the back, right? With these cars parked?
Yes.
You can spread things out a little more?
Yeah, a little more.
Okay.
The only thing we'd really be changing is just, there's vegetation there right now. I mean, we got to clear it to make the parking lot.
Any other questions from the board?
Is, is this going to be lit?
Not right now.
I'm sorry, I missed it out. I apologize. Okay.
Yeah, no, no additional lighting.
Okay. From a security standpoint, that's not, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
For security, you wouldn't need the lighting or anything?
I mean, my father's owned this property for years. The syrup substation's literally right next door now.
The new one?
Fair enough.
The new one. And, and on top of it, personally, I think light just helps them. You know, I mean, if they're breaking in, they're going to do what they want to do and if you're lighting the place up for them.
You got to be a Billy goat anyway to get up there.
Yeah, I mean, so it's just, I prefer to keep no lights on it.
Thank you.
You'd never catch them anyhow.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Makes it more visible, right?
Yeah, makes it, that's it, makes it more visible, yeah.
Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more.
Almost. Next application, please.
Randy Beevout, TY Lynn International, 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of McDonald's USA LLC, request a special permit under Chapter 250-10.3-A, 250-10.13-C, and Chapter 250-10.11-E of the code to allow more than one building-mounted sign and signage with greater graphics, trademarks, or logos than permitted at 2191 Penfield Road. The property is owned by Mary Ellen Guan and is zoned general business, SPL number 140.01-2-1.1. This is application 18Z-0005.
So I'm going to hand out the, what is the most recent elevation. As was discussed in the pre-meeting, we have revised the elevation based on comments from the planning board. We are scheduled to be at the planning board meeting next Thursday night.
Thank you.
Can you explain exactly what was changed? It's actually fairly simple. And I, I've just put up the site plan. I'm sure everybody is fairly familiar with the site, but I just wanted to, because some of the, sort of addressed what the planning board's concerns were and how it impact, made, you know, how it impacted really the signage. So we've changed the elevation and we've changed the location of two signs, but we still have the same, the request is still the same, they're just in a different location on the building. So the drive-through side of the building, meaning the side of the building where you pay and you pick up your food faces, faces Penfield Road. We came in with elevations, which were the standard design, the prototype design, if you will, this, this being a remodel, it was the standard design. And unfortunately, the drive-through side of the building tends to be the, I'll use the word plainest, simplest side of the building, maybe the least attractive, just because it's the longest side of the building that doesn't have doorways on it, it just has windows. So what we've done to the elevation, if you look on the first sheet, on the bottom, which is referred to as the drive-through elevation, what we did was add what McDonald's refers to as the brand wall. Essentially, it's a feature that just sticks out, it's a relief for the build, architectural relief, it sticks out from the building about six inches. It stands a little taller than the rest of the building. So it's this column here on the left side. So initially, we did not have that on the drawing. So this was a little more plain. And the other thing that we've added is the different materials around the two drive-through windows. Currently, the materials that are proposed are tile. It's a six-by-36-inch tile, sort of has a wood grain type look to it. So those three things were added previously that, that weren't there. We feel fairly confident that the, the planning board will like what we presented. In addition to that, the, when we came in the first time, the brand walls, which there is actually three of them now, there was two before. There's one on the front that faces Fairport Road, and then there's one on the parking lot side at the entrance. So they typically put the brand walls at the entrance. It's sort of the directing you to the door, if you will. But we, we have the ability to add the brand wall on the non-drive-through side again as just to add a little interest and that brand wall sits back here on the east corner. So when we came in initially, that brand wall was just ephesus. So we've made the change to upgrade that brand wall to a tile, so now there's just a different material from, this building is brick. The plan is to paint the brick. We removed them, they removed the mansard roof and from the, where the, the bottom of the mansard roof up is ephesus, and then they also installed this corrugated panel at the top of that. So just to kind of give you a reference of what's happening to the building. So the ephesus on top, the painted brick on the bottom, and then we've added the tile on the brand wall. So it just gives a different texture, a different material on the building. So the initial, just to talk about the sign location, so initially, we have an arch on the brand wall on the parking lot side. We have an arch on the brand wall on the front, and then we had an arch up here in the front corner, and then we had the, what is referred to as the, the script that says McDonald's, which is referred to as the wordmark sign, was initially on the front of the building. We had taken that, as you can see from the elevation, we've taken it off that elevation and moved it to the side. And part of that is just to, we're going to have one of those signs, let's put it on the side that's most visible. And really what it does is it just helps break up this long facade that had, you know, has nothing else on it, if you will, above the, the windows. So, so the request for the number of signs is still the same. That hasn't changed. And the package that we submitted, we provided what I refer, what we refer to as a building and site sign summary. So we provided a table which summarizes the signage of what's on the building today and what's, what's being proposed. So currently on the building, there is one, we'll call it facia or wall sign, which is the, currently that's on the front of the building here, which is the McDonald's script sign. So what we're showing in these tables are boxed-out areas in that the McDonald's script sign that's there today has the arch and then the words, the rest of the words. So when you box that out, which is how we've done it in most towns that we go into, that's actually 65.6 square feet. The new signs are, trust me when I say they're mu, they're much nicer, cleaner-looking, they're LED. They don't have the black plastic, if you will, that the current sign has. It's just a much cleaner-looking sign. And I have provided renderings of that in the package here. So that existing sign is 32.9 feet. And then there's three arches that are located in the, currently there's three arches that are located in the windows. I believe there's, if I recall, there's one, I think there's one on each side. So those are in the window. Those are 24.9 square feet each. So we've provided a tabulation of all that signage, which comes up to 140.3 square feet. We've provided a tabulation of the new signage, which is one of the wordmark signs, and then three of the arches. These arches are only 14 square feet. So I would just note, when McDonald's does the brand wall, and again, like most national retailers, they have branding, it's an identification. We're changing the building look, so the, you know, the old branding used to be the mansard roof. It's the red and white roof and that's how people identified McDonald's, in addition to obviously the arch. But, so when they do these brand walls, they like to have the, it's sort of their corporate requirement. There are some flexibility to it, but they prefer to have this, this brand wall, which is sort of the, catching everybody's eye, they like to have the arch on, on the brand wall. So that's sort of what we're, well, not sort of, that's what we're showing here, is that each brand wall, we have three brand walls, so we're, so we're showing three arches. And then again, we've added the McDonald's script on the, on the Penfield Road side. So in looking at this from what's there today to what we're proposing, it's really the same number of signs, but the square footage is actually being reduced quite significantly just based on the, the new sizes of the, the signs. So, and, and I've provided in the, I can go through it if the board would like, but we've provided in our, so our Exhibit A, you know, we're requesting a special permit to allow the four building signs. In the Exhibit B, we've provided justifications for the five reasons of why the board, why we think the board should grant the signage. I, I won't read that verbatim if the board has any questions and we, I can, we can certainly discuss that. But we're, I think, you know, this is, I think, a very nice improvement. I know Mary Ellen is very excited, this is a very nice improvement to this restaurant, consistent with some other things that we're aware of, the Target and other things that are happening in the area. So we're, we're excited about this and we think the, the signage is appropriate for, given, you know, given this site and the fact that it's a corner location and that, again, the proposed signs and the arches are really fairly small, relatively speaking, and very nice, clean-looking signs, LED lit, so. With that, I'll answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you for presenting. I agree with you that the building could, it would be nicely updated. I know it's an older building. So one concern that I have is you list the window signs as part of your signage, but actually, we don't count that. Do you know what I mean? Those are, those are kind of freebies.
Understood, yes.
So right now, you've got, I think, when I drove by, you've got the one script sign and then the freestanding sign.
Yes, that's correct.
So this new plan is, you don't have the windows, so that would be four total, right?
Right. So you're saying we're going from one to four, not four to four?
You're going from one freestanding and one wall to, yeah, the four.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, apple's an apple. Well, yeah, I'm just saying, apples to apples, we're going from one building sign to four buildings.
That would be more accurate, I think, to say that.
Yes, because we're not proposing any changes to the freestanding sign, we're not proposing any changes to the directionals. There are changes being proposed to the drive-through signage, which isn't part of this application, which didn't require a variance. I can certainly talk about that, I don't know if we need to, but...
I don't think so. But why do you feel that you need these additional signs when right now and for many years you haven't had them?
The reason being, again, it's just, it's part of McDonald's branding, but making this look different, because it's not going to look like it does today with the red, white, and yellow, that it does change, and I mean, granted, people over a period of time will get used to this and know that it's McDonald's, some people may not initially, that are not from the area. But, again, given its corner location, given the competitive nature of these businesses, whether it's Taco Bell across the street or whoever else, it's just providing the necessary branding to make the return on investment that's going to, these investments are fairly significant to do these remodels. This remodel includes not only exterior facade, excludes exterior ADA improvements, includes interior ADA improvements, new dining room is part of that, the new drive-through menu boards, which go from the old panels that you see there today, where they're all digital now, essentially a TV, two TV screens back there. So, it is a significant investment. McDonald's, you know, is always in the position that it's an impulse business, the more signage that they can have, the more successful they're going to be, more successful that the local owner/operator is going to be.
Sure. And I get that. I understand what you're saying. I also have a concern, because we did have very recently an application where somebody asked for, a business asked for signage on three sides of the buildings, it was very close by, but because of its prominent location, we didn't think that that merited it.
Okay.
But, so I just, you know, that's what's going through my head right now.
Why don't you let them know where that was, just so, if you're familiar with it, you can try to make a distinction.
So, it was the Verizon building, which is on the other side of 250.
North, north.
North. It's Penfear Plaza.
Is it right here or here?
There you go.
It's right there, and it's right near the entrance. And our thinking was that, well, it's very visible to everybody, it's, and I think this McDonald's is actually even more prominent than the Verizon.
I'm not, I sort of picture it and I can't, but...
Right. But they wanted, you know, obviously for branding reasons, they wanted Verizon on all sides, and we just didn't think it was warranted. So, that's where I'm at right now.
I mean, McDonald's, just, we're being very frank here, the order of priority of what they want for signage, they want the arch on the brand wall. They would, generally, they give up the script sign, which is the biggest sign, first versus compared to giving up other signs. We thought this made sense here, again, because we have this, you know, we have this long facade, and it, you know, when you take off the mansard, it's just a vertical wall that's just painted, and it's a nice earth tone color, but it sort of helps add some interest to the facade, even though it is a sign.
Yeah, I'm hearing what you're saying, which is, you know, architecturally, it would look better. I feel a little shoehorned.
Where, I mean, if you look at the front, you know, the front facade, which we had the sign here, which we've now moved to here, but it's just, I don't want to say it's plain, but it's plain. It's, but it, some people, that's, I mean, it's architecture, people look at that differently. So, that was sort of the thought of centering that on the side of the building. But I would say if, you know, the board says, geez, we're only going to grant you one sign, then we're going to figure out what arch we're going to leave on the building. We're permitted one sign, but if we have to get rid of a sign, that's the sign we're going to get rid of first.
You're going to get rid of the McDonald's.
Yes.
Okay.
Because the brand wall is really their branding, that's the identity that they're creating on not only this restaurant, but lots of other restaurants.
Sure. Okay, I understand. That's all for me.
Any other questions? Questions? Nope. Well, come on up.
Yeah, you can ask.
Identify yourself for the record.
Jim Costello, Town of Penfield. Before I get started, I want to apologize to Randy, because he does not know about what I'm going to talk about, I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it. But one of the issues I want to bring before the board, as we review signage, and I should have done this before, there's currently a freestanding sign on the site, and the board did approve at some point in time in the past, a second sign underneath the freestanding sign that identifies McDonald's. As you all know, the town zoning ordinance requires sign identification for the business, not for advertising purposes. And I believe that when that sign was added on to the freestanding sign, it was for things such as community services, that type of thing, acknowledging 4th of July, that kind of event. They have not been using it for that purpose, and I've got this current showing, using it for advertising of, you know, milkshakes, that kind of thing. And I'm wondering if that's an issue that Randy might want to bring back to the owners to talk about, maybe as part of the review of this plan, to look at possibly eliminating that as part of the project of getting more signage.
Eliminating the sign or using it as...
The reader board, the one underneath it.
Well, it's never been utilized for anything other than for advertising purposes. We don't allow gas stations to advertise pricing on their signs. This is the same kind of a thing in this situation.
But just so I'm clear, there is an approval resolution somewhere that requires that it be used?
No, it's just that, what I'm telling the board is that our ordinance, for whatever reason that was approved in the past, our ordinance allows for signage to identify businesses, not to advertise things that are being sold from the business.
Okay.
Okay? And that's the premise of the entire zoning ordinance for the sign ordinance, is to use it for business identification.
So, did they, did they require a separate approval for the smaller sign?
They did, yes.
Okay, and at that point...
And they did receive it.
But it just says another sign is approved.
Right.
It doesn't say another sign is approved for advertising purposes, it just says another sign.
And I think the intent initially was to utilize it for things such as now hiring, that kind of a situation. But, you know, variously, various times it's not been used for that purpose.
Wouldn't they have had to have stated what they were going to use it for?
I'm sure they may have, I was not the clerk to the board at that time, so I don't know.
Okay.
And I'm just bringing it to the board's attention to look at as an issue, and give him some time to talk to the owners to look at that as possibly, you know, a negotiating issue as it deals with more signage.
So, would that be helpful for you to be able to talk with the owner about it?
Also, I want to speak to that.
Come on back up into the microphone. Are you done, Cos?
Yes.
Okay. Just so the microphone picks you up.
I want to speak to that, because I did that, or our office requested the variance from this board to get approval for that. It's a changeable reader board. Now, it was 2006, I'm getting old, I forget things. I don't remember exactly what was stated, but it's certainly in the minutes somewheres. But I can't imagine we came in here to tell the board that we're only going to use that to say we're hiring, or it's July 4th, or something, when it's a changeable reader board that's used to advertise specials. Now, and I think we actually, and the reason I say that, is that I think we came in even at one point, or part of that process, and actually had graphic panels as part of the presentation. But I think we just need to review that of what was in the minutes.
Do we still have video of meetings going back that far?
We have the minutes.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I think it would be beneficial for all of us to review that, and I can go back in the office tomorrow, and I'll have my, you know, I'll have my package of what we submitted to the town, and I may even be able to find the resolution, but if, my mind is really slipping me if what he's saying is correct. I'm not saying he's...
No, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just, we wouldn't done it, the reason they do it is to be able to advertise different things.
New products, whatever the case might be.
Coffee, or whatever it may be.
So, Mike, it's likely that this may be tabled. And we've talked about reasons for that, or perhaps other information. Something else that I always find useful when we have applications like this, which is pretty much seems like every month, is a comparison between your property, and Marie kind of got into this with the Verizon. So, I'm not saying you have to do this, but I suggest you take the opportunity, if we table it, to put together a comparison of other businesses in the area that perhaps have been granted variances.
And I did look, I remember looking at specifically the Taco Bell, and I don't, I mean, I don't think they have as many.
Because honestly, it, if next month Taco Bell or some other business comes in and says, well, you just gave it to McDonald's.
Understood.
Yeah, you know. So, we either have to distinguish this one or be consistent with prior.
And the other one is Aldi, which we, they had wanted signage on both sides of the buildings, and we said no. And I hear what you're saying about, you know, architecturally, it looks better. I'm not sure that's reasonable enough.
It's a judgment, yeah. I mean, it's, architecture is different to everybody, but...
It is.
Okay, anything else from the board? I don't think there's anyone else in the audience. No, I'm looking behind you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recall number three, have we heard from anybody, any info on that applicant? So, let me ask you something, can we act on that? I don't know how you guys feel about that, but we do have a written application and kind of lousy...
Nah.
Well, but we don't, I mean, we have nobody here, not even any non-applicant witnesses.
Can we just postpone it?
Well, we can, but I'm trying to...
Spoken like that.
Right. Don't know?
Pete.
No, all right. I mean, historically, I don't think we've done that.
Right.
All right, okay. Well, then, we'll contact them and see what the heck happened. It is a lousy night out there, relatively speaking. Okay, so the public hearings will be adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and reconvene in the back. Thank you all very much. All right, are we all set? So, we can reconvene here, and who do we have? Let's hear it. Number four.
Four.
So, I'm making a motion that this is an unlisted action requiring no further review and no negative environmental impact.
Second.
You are moving for a neg deck on the...
I'm moving for a neg deck on the unlisted action.
Okay, so we have a motion by Marie to declare it an unlisted action and to further find a negative declaration, and we have a second on that motion from Jill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This request for a conditional use permit is totally within, you know, a reasonable use for that building, and in fact, it has been the salon in the past. So, I'm going to make a motion to grant a conditional use permit for the barber shop, based on the fact that it is consistent with the use of the building in the neighborhood.
Second.
A motion by Marie to grant, a second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm also going to make a motion to approve the sign, the request for a sign which is, I think, two, three by five feet. It's consistent with the sign that's already existing, it's required to have for the building to identify the building, and it does not exceed the maximum amount of signage.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the special permit by Marie and a second by Jill.
And the sign is what I just did also.
Sign.
We did the, we did the conditional use permit.
Well, it's a special permit for a sign, right, Mr. Costello? You've been correcting us for the last six months on that. And apparently, one of us has been paying attention.
Yeah, all right.
All right.
Motion to approve a special permit for a sign.
Yeah. And a second by Jill. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, good luck. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, let's go to five.
All right. Planning board already backed it as the agency, but I guess we're also required to make a secret motion, so I'm going to move that this be classified as an unlisted action and issue a negative declaration.
Motion by Mike to declare this an unlisted action and to further find a negative declaration, second by Jill. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, with regard to the motion, I'm going to move to approve this. Although it's expanding the amount of storage on the property, it's not significantly expanding use per se, it's pretty well buffered, both visually and otherwise, and I just don't think it's going to have a detrimental effect on anything in the world. So, for those reasons, I would move to approve.
Second.
Hi, a motion by Mike to approve and a second by Jill. I would add that it, in my opinion, in any event, elimination of a flag lot and creation of more parking area would bring the use more in conformance with communities, current community standards.
Good point.
Yeah. So, any further discussion on this? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving right along, number six.
Okay. I was going to make a motion to table this. Do I want to do seeker first?
Do we do seeker if we table, we can?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to issue a negative declaration. This is an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marie for, what did we say, unlisted or typed?
Unlisted.
Unlisted, and therefore also a negative declaration. And Mike has seconded that. Further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I am going to make a motion to table this particular application. One, I'd really like to hear what the planning board comments are in the next work session, and also it will give time for the applicant to confer with the owner about their priorities as far as signage. So, I think we're missing some information, that's why I'd like to table.
Second.
And I saw a motion by Marie to table, second by Jill. I would just echo some of the other reasons that we talked about, are opportunities for further information to be submitted by the applicant in the time between meetings.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go back to number one.
I'm not quite sure that this was, that he demonstrated the need. I mean, he did, but I'm not convinced that that need exists. But be that as it may, even if I were in favor of granting this, I think the need to get input from Delta Sonic, both what they're going to do with regard to this fence, and I want something definitely in writing by the applicant if we approve it, saying that he realizes that he's been explained to risk, if that's what happened, and also make sure that it doesn't impact anybody anyway. So, for those reasons, I'm going to move to table this at this point.
So, let me ask you, let's assume that we have satisfactory actions on, or answers on all that.
I mean, it's really a tough call, I guess I kind of...
And I'm not pushing you, I'm just saying if this gets denied tonight, then all that other stuff is moot.
Well, you know, the...
I guess I'd like to hear what the other board...
Fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, okay. My opinion is, I mean, if it...
Can we do seeker first?
Thank you.
Can we do seeker, we're having a discussion?
Type two.
Well, just do it before you make your motion.
Yeah, go ahead, do it, might as well.
Yeah, I just move it to type two action, no significant impact.
All right, so that's Mike, and Jill seconded the seeker, type two. No further action needed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, it really doesn't affect anybody except himself, nobody in the world sees it. And if that blocks enough to make him even mentally more sound, you know, frankly, Scarlett, but he's got to admit, and he's got to know that he is now responsible for the fence. And almost everybody that buys...
And almost everybody that buys a house, 99.9% of people that buy a house know they're responsible for their fence, and you just have to say...
Here's sort of what I'm afraid of, unless we make, we document it well, he sells his house in two years, never discloses anything, and the next thing you know, the owner finds out that Delta Sonic had made the stand, and we're into a big bruhah.
Well, that's why what you said is right, and him signs it. That he will notify anybody that he sells the house to.
One thing you could do is possibly have the resolution of approval filed in the miscellaneous records section of the county clerk's office. They don't pick up on the abstract, do they?
That would definitely be a good idea if we get to that stage.
I also do want to hear definitely from Delta Sonic.
Well, that's what it said.
Well, you know, and Delta Sonic, I got to be honest with you. I mean, this was part of a condition to build Delta Sonic eight foot. You're talking about two more foot to make someone happy. What is wrong with that business? I mean...
Well, the other side of that is at some point in time, well, there's nothing wrong with the business, they're just going by that condition of approval.
I know.
But again, remember, and you know, you've been here long enough, they will come in for another application for something.
Yeah, you're right. And we will remember that.
Well, but also, we heard some things tonight about how cooperative they've been. They did remove the trees for the applicant. The other neighbor says he's called and they came right over, so, you know, I hear you.
And if you remember, Dan, which I pointed out at the hearing, there was significant neighbor involvement.
Oh, we went to people's houses?
Yeah, we did. I was with some guys, I was in his brother's house, looking to see what, right?
Yeah, we were, we wanted to see what you could see from the sucker.
And those neighbors were all pretty much, you know, in favor of the noise reduction, the visual reduction, and it lasted for 20 years. Now, all of a sudden, it's not good enough.
Okay. Any thoughts on that?
Are you guys going to be able to get a hold of Delta Sonic and see what they're...
Yes, yes.
And that'll give us more information.
So, do we have enough discussion that we think we should table?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, okay, you're, okay. So, you stand...
I'll make a motion at that point to the table.
Second.
For all...
Dan, I think we need to define where, you know, how we define what we're, if we grant it, we need input from the applicant as to exactly where that starts, begins...
Oh, absolutely. I mean, there is clear specifications on that, that's another good point. Clarify the position from Delta Sonic, and who had the burden to file the, what was it?
I don't know. It was an agreement that I couldn't find.
An agreement relating to maintaining the fence?
But they have done that. I mean, the fence was in good shape. I went to look at the fence. He's right, they have not spent a lot of time on it, but they haven't had to either because there's no, there's no impact, it was being buffered by the other fence, and there's no rabble browsing going in that area that would knock it down.
We should just do what we, use this occasion to do what we can to get that filed as well. Maybe it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I think it said that Delta Sonic had to agree to maintain the fence, and the agreement had to be filed in the county clerk's office.
But now, they had to reach an agreement. Should be recorded, it doesn't say by whom.
No.
Well, we can do that, town can do that.
Yep.
Okay, cool. So, we have a motion by Mike to table, and we have a second by Marie, I believe, to table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, what do we have? I'm going to make a motion that this is a type 2 action under seeker, and therefore no further action is required.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dan, type 2 action under seeker, and a second by Mike. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion to approve. I will tell you, I was a little bit confused by the five feet, 10 feet, but they cleared it up, right? It's 10 feet from the line, meaning it's a 20-foot variance, so that did make a difference in my mind. We pressed them about questions, the theoretical use, that's, I think they answered it well. I would suggest a condition that buffering on the berm and on each side, they've agreed to that, buffering in a manner sufficient to block views from neighbors on the side of the buffering. That's my motion.
Second.
All right, so I've made a motion to approve with that condition. Marie's made a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those know, okay. Three, what are we going to do with three? Follow them and then put them on?
Well, I think you have to deny it without prejudice based on the fact that they failed to appear before you, and then they just have to give them back in again if he's willing, if he wants to pursue.
That doesn't cost them more money.
It does. It costs $110, or $70 every time that he applies, because you got to advertise in the favor by law, you have to do it.
Oh, I see.
And it costs $110 to ever...
Well, in their case, it's a church, so we kind of consider that to be more residential and commercial, so we charge them instead of $100.
More commercial and residential.
What if he says I was stuck in a snowbank?
Yeah, right. I mean, can't we just postpone it?
The Pentel post, wherever you publish it, still going to charge the town, publishing the notice.
You've got to pay it.
Okay, any further business?
So, what do you want us to do?